...for these as, as, as these become available, I feel like we can do a better job as a public health team to educate our public on, on disease states, maybe having some in-sources here at the library, things of that nature. Really, not much there unless you have input on programs you want to see, or you've had citizens talk to you about. Just trying to not pull the focus away from COVID, but just try to say there's other things we can also work on and improve in our community. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Any questions on item one in discussion? Seeing that, I'm going to move on to item two. Just a quick update on COVID-19. We have 305 positive cases in our county. The 305 cases represent our citizens, our people. They don't include the prison numbers. The numbers are constantly changing. It's a constant challenge to keep up with. This 305, I took time on Sunday and went through the list, excluded all the repeat tests. Anybody that's tested here but doesn't live here within the bounds of White Pine County and removed them from our list. So the 305 you see is an accurate, is the most accurate number that I can come up with. We have 39 active cases, that's 39 families, households under quarantine. We've had three deaths. I've been requested to put a few of the demographics there. So that's why you see we've had one male, age 50 to 60, one female, age 80 to 90, and one male, 80 to 90 years old. All of these are tragedy, in my opinion. I'm saddened by the loss of these members of our community. We've had 263 people recovered. That's great. This is a survivable disease for the majority of us. We just don't know who's going to get it and pass, and who's going to struggle, and who's just going to walk around and not even know they have it. So we have 263 recovered. Our schools, in constant contact with our school districts, and our charter school, they're doing a wonderful job. They're, they're not spreading the disease, in my opinion, from our schools. Our students know how to wear masks, they know how to clean, they know how to socially distance, and so we see a lot of great things. As of date, our last meeting, no local businesses have reached out to me. You can see on page two, the graphic of the cases throughout the beginning of time until, up to, until today. You can also see the state graphic, which shows the, we are currently still in the red with a positivity rate of 18.7%. I would agree with that assessment. Any discussion on item two?
Thank you for being thorough on the, on the details.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Appreciate your input. Three, possible action. This is something we should vote on. This is the quarantine orders since our last meeting. Our last meeting that we voted on quarantine orders was 11/16. So since the last meeting, I have either issued, or not really issued, I guess, instructed and put people in quarantine, or families and households. That amounts to eight individuals that ask for a motion to approve these quarantine orders as stated.
Motion to approve quarantine orders as stated.
Second. Second. Motion by Commissioner Carson, second by Commissioner Biden. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Discussion four, just briefly.
Darren, you should be ready too.
Oh, I agree too. Yay, hey, thanks, I did. I agree. Four, I wanted to give you an update on COVID-19 vaccine. The hospital is going to receive the first 140 doses. We've been told that'll be here December 16th. First tier responders will get the vaccine. That means all of the hospital staff, or the majority of those who wish to get the vaccine, will have it made available to them. The FDA is meeting tomorrow. I recently found a 53-page document, as recently as this morning, that just details all the virus vaccines, all the ins, outs, complications, adverse events, things of that nature. I have yet the time to review that. However, the FDA is reviewing, reviewing that tomorrow. We are anticipating, though, that that'll just fly through the process. We won't be able to, we'll be able to get that. This first 140 doses does not include our sheriff's department, doesn't include fire department, EMS. They have chosen to, to put their tier down a little bit. And so right now, it's only the hospitals, what I've been told, will be getting the vaccines. If we end up with an excess of vaccine, we will look for guidance and open that up to the sheriff's department, the EMS, those people that are going to be affected. We will not see a, we do not want to see any vaccine go to waste. We're told on 12/28, that's hopefully when we will see about another 360 doses coming to our community. Those will hopefully be then for the first responders, prison guards, EMS, fire, sheriffs, and, and the pod volunteers, those actually doing the shots, will be allowed to get a vaccination. Any questions that it comes to the vaccine?
When do you figure the public will be getting that?
I, I don't think we're going to see public till spring.
How do we sign up for it if we want to be on the list?
That'll be something I think I'll work with Shannon Pierce, our county health nurse, and myself will work together and try to figure out a way that those who wish to get the vaccine, get on the list and, and get in line. I'm sure we will do a major pod drop, almost like our flu pod drop, on multiple locations around the county, where we can immunize all at once, the shot.
Do, is there some kind of regulation telling us we can't make it available to the general public?
The, the shot itself, yes. There, the way it's being rolled out federally is that hospital workers are tier one, in that they are the most at risk and most exposure to COVID-19, so they will be vaccinated first.
Sure.
Then it goes, trickles from there. So you have firefighters, EMS, sheriff's department, our White Pine Care Center, those kind of people. So it's actually on the federal level mandated who, who's in line.
Interesting.
And how, based on their risk of developing the virus, since hospital personnel are direct contact with people in the hospital.
My biggest, what was on my mind was, I don't want to speak for them, but just knowing the attitudes and character of the good people we have, and the sheriff's department and the first responders, if they came out and said, hey, give it to the people that are most at risk first, I just didn't know if they even had that option.
I can look into that. That's a great idea. I, I just don't know the answer off the top of my head, but that's good to know.
Yeah, kind of up to Ian's point, you know, once these rollouts, just that somehow we have a list of, you know, folks that are, are at high risk, that if there's leftovers from here, or that they're definitely prioritized. So it sounds like you're working on that, so.
Yeah.
And I want, you see where prisoners are going to get it before citizens. I'm opposed to that.
Maybe I misspoke, if, if you think that. I don't see that.
I'm just making sure.
Oh, I, I don't know. I don't think so. Prison guards, prison guards being key. We, we want them as healthy as possible to, to be able to do their job and, and be on the job. So not, not to my knowledge, prisoners.
Darren, there was one article I read that stated that, that communities, it's funny, it sounded like they were writing about White Pine County, communities that are isolated with limited healthcare would, would receive a higher priority. Have you heard anything like that?
I have not heard that. Wouldn't surprise me. That would be nice, because we are limited on our resources. We, we don't have as big as healthcare facility as other, you know, Los Angeles, Reno, Vegas. We don't have the, all the resources, the pulmonologists, things of that nature, if, if it were to come to dire needs. But I have not read that.
Yes, in regards to the care center?
Yes.
Are, are they after the hospital?
They're after the hospital, and in the same group, my understanding right now, is the EMS and the sheriff's department and essential employees of that nature. I did have good news. I, I talked with our care center yesterday. You are actually allowed to make an appointment now, and, you know, it's kind of tragic, but you can make an appointment and go and see loved ones inside the building. But they limit the time, and they're really documenting who's coming in, who's coming out, just in case there's an exposure. So I was pleased with that. I was really pleased with that. Any other comments on section four?
Okay, great, thank you.
Great. Section five, well, section four, section five just is a approval of the minutes of the, from our last meeting, November 16th. Any of you who wish to approve or make comments or changes?
I have some.
Your pleasure.
I'm beginning to feel like I'm kneeling on the ground. Actually, let me go ahead and make a motion to approve the November 16th special board public health meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. Any opposed, I've seen none, so most she cares.
Okay, and then on, the meeting on the 23rd, I have a couple clarifications also, I think, that, and I think it's under, take this off, it's under, I apologize, I should have been, instead of listening, I should have been looking for you, so I wasn't giving you so much time.
Well, you're fine. What do you look for that, Commissioner Carson? I'm just going to speak briefly, just for the, our benefit. Let me tell you about yesterday's experience in the emergency room. I talked to more emergency providers. We had three individuals needing placement. This is more just, I guess, public, not public comment, just more comment and discussion about COVID. Just, he spent six hours trying to get somebody out of here. Nobody in Reno would take this individual, nobody in Vegas would take this individual, nobody at University of Utah would take this individual. He finally found placement through, believe it or not, all places, Huntsman Cancer Institute, because this individual had some underlying other issues going on. Just showed you the dire need with, with COVID-19. We are seeing our hospitals that we normally would transfer to say no. Doesn't mean they won't take them. I was pleased to hear, I think our meeting, we had on the 23rd, they made the comment, it's hard, being somebody that might be at a cardiac risk, that they might not take them, or take myself, but that is not, not the case. He made sure that they, we were under the understanding that if somebody has a heart attack in our community, or being stents, that the University of Utah is still willing to take those patients. However, this happened to be a GI bleed, and specifically, they have no interest in taking our patients. So there, there is some struggles in our surrounding areas, just be aware. COVID looks good in our community. I mean, relatively, right? We're doing pretty good. But in other communities, they are starting to turn us down if we need to send somebody out of here, which is kind of disappointing. So just, just so you know.
On, on page, on page seven, where it was item three, it says that this item was not discussed. That's not true. We had tabled it. And then, and I have, I'm sorry, I can't find it, but there was another one, when Chairman Howell was asked, going around the board, asking what the comments were in regards to the, the resolution. I, I had said in there that I wanted to hear from the DA, and the sheriff, and the public health officer, before I commented, not before I voted.
Okay. If we can make those changes, do you feel comfortable voting in favor?
Yeah, yeah, that was just with those changes. We'll go ahead and I'll make a motion.
Nicole, are you okay with, you understand what's going on?
Yes, I do.
Better probably than I?
Yes, sorry, I couldn't find it.
Comes to, comes to that. Okay, so all in favor with, so do you?
Changes? Yes, a motion to approve the changes.
Make motion to approve by Commissioner Carson, with the changes made.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bowles. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, seen one? I will leave, unless you guys have any further closing meeting. Meeting, a public comment again?
Yeah.
Public comment, county commissioner for public health?
This is Laura from Page Coalition.
Go ahead.
I would, I would like to speak about what he was talking about on item one, and those of you who know me, know that we do the drug and alcohol and other substance abuse prevention education, and we do still have it available. And I hold meetings there on the third Tuesday at 3:00 PM at William B. Riory, but we are doing education through the Boys and Girls Club, and we are doing it through Den Elementary. And we do come do public education on substances of abuse, and I can provide my contact information, but most of you haven't, or you can come see me on the 15th. I'll be there at 3:00 PM for the meeting. But we do have available education that we do. We work with the sheriff's department and support the school resource officers, and we come and, we're certified prevention specialists, so we do have that available to your community at any time, if you want to contact us and let us know what substances or what type of trainings you have. We also have contact, contract dollars that we can spend. We work with juvenile probation, so it is in your community, and we do have more opportunities available if somebody wants to contact Page Coalition, and we can bring it in.
Perfect. Thank you for your comment. I, I meant no disrespect to your efforts in our school district. I just wondered, as a public health officer, what I could do in addition and get our public health commission also thinking about things we could do to help our students. So I appreciate all your efforts in our county.
Yes, and we would be more than happy to increase it, because that's what we're all about, is, is the health and wellness of our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we talked about the numbers of the public affected locally, but it did not include the prison. I think those prison numbers should be reported if, separate if nothing else. We have several hundred employees that work out at that facility, and they interact throughout the community, and I think it should behoove us to know the total amount. That facility is no different than mine or any other business in this community. The numbers should be included. Thank you.
Just, just a clarification on the public comment. The numbers, the 305 I posed, for anybody that lives in White Pine County, excluding our prison population, the people that are incarcerated. I, if we added those, if last county got from the county or the, or the state, we'd probably put our numbers over 400. Just realize, I don't always have access to the prisoner data. I'm not testing them, nor am I tracking them as a public health officer. I have no interaction with the prisoners, therefore, I, I really can't do anything to manipulate that. But if, if it's a prison guard, or any of the auxiliary staff out there, yes, I talk with them and visit, and they are included in our numbers. Any further public comment?
Yes, please. My name is Carol Coates, and I would like to ask the public health officer why he approved on December 5th for the children to be able to sit on Santa's lap.
We don't answer questions.
You don't answer questions. If you reach out to me, Karen, I'll be happy to visit with you over the phone.
I'm sorry, you can't do that publicly?
No, not during public comment. Public comment is for public comment, there's no response.
You can make your statement of your dissatisfaction in public comment, but we don't interrogate public officers in public comment.
Answered other people. He answered other people.
He answers the commission prior to public comment. This isn't an inquisition. It's made your displeasure.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We'll call the meeting in pause.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
At this time, let's take a quick break. We've been here almost two hours, so let's take a quick break. We'll come back in order to the 10 o'clock CDVG meeting. Okay, we're going to go back into the meeting, and again, I can't reiterate how sorry we are about the delay on the timed items. We're going to get to them, and get to them as rapidly as we can. Okay, we're at a, on page three, at, at 10 o'clock, item D. Item one is a public hearing, discussion only. The White Pine County Board of Commissioners will take public input on the possible activities to be included in the application for funding under the next fiscal year, July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. The state community development block, that's CDVG. Elizabeth.
Mr. Chairman, this is our third public hearing for next year's CDVG community development program. And during the previous two hearings, we took recommendations and suggestions. We did turn those in through CDVG. There were three recommendations. One was the McGill sewer pond relining, the construction phase. One was the McGill slide ditch remediation, the construction phase, and one was a broadband project. The first two, the two in McGill, the sewer pond relining and the slide ditch, were approved by CDVG to proceed forward with the, with the actual applications. And so we are able to put forward two applications. And so at this third public hearing, we have the opportunity to take public comment on these two projects, and hear what the public might have to say, and then following that, I would ask you to rank those projects, so that we can go ahead and get the applications prepared and submitted, and I believe the submissions are due in February. So I would ask if there's any public comment related to the CDVG application process.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and we will be back to this. Is this the third one?
This is our third one, yes.
Okay, this is discussion only, so we heard from Elizabeth about how we have to have this in by February, we'll keep it prioritized and be posted for submission. Okay. Now, we're at the 10:05, on page three as well. It's the Pine Valley Water Supply Project, discussion update, a discussion regarding potential adverse effects the Pine Valley Water Project will have on Snake and Spring Valleys, including potential litigation costs and alternatives for assisting with them. Kyle Roney.
Hey, Kyle, how are you?
How are you? Good to see you all. But then kind of not good to see you all, because I guess I'm only here whenever we're dealing with bad water projects. So here we are again, it's good to see you all. You know, I, chairman and members of the commission, I just want to start out by saying this, this is kind of my message. You know, we delivered a knockout punch to the SNWA. We're not going to be sucker punched by Cedar City, but we could if, if we don't collectively take action. And so for the past month, I've been meeting with commissioners in Millard County, Utah, Juette County, Utah, working with the Salt Lake County Council, and, and even working with, with Tuella. We're kind of getting the band back together, I guess you could say, as it relates to some of the alliances we had in the fight with the SNWA. And I put together this presentation just to kind of quickly go over what we're dealing with. And, you know, I think, you know, a very simple way to put it is that Cedar City wants to pump and pipe water from the basins that are neighbors to Snake Valley. And, you know, they have 10,000 acre feet worth of applications in Hamlin Valley, which is, you know, the USGS doesn't even distinguish between Snake and Hamlin. They, they count it all as, as the same basin. So there are some intricacies that, that I just wanted to get and, and, you know, explain to you all here, but I think the big thing is that, you know, we're just, we're asking for, for support, and, you know, these are, these are tough times, but, you know, the big thing is getting some hydrology done. And Beaver County has, has committed about $35,000 to do that. To get everything that we need for the long run will be, you know, probably between another 30 and 40, give or take. And the other counties, you know, I'm asking them the same thing, to help fill the gap. You know, this isn't just us at, you know, White Pine, where you fill in and help, help with everything. But, you know, that's kind of where we are, and I think ultimately, we get some MOUs in place, you know, between all these counties that have concerns about the future of their water supply. I think we can get something that's equitable there, and, you know, doesn't put it on just burden, you know, just on one county government alone. And I think, you know, in that way, we're also having a stronger showing, you know, down the road against Iron County, as it relates to when you have Beaver, and White Pine, and Millard, and Juette, and others all lining up. I think that makes a pretty good statement. But, you know, I think we can start this and, and get into it a little bit here. This is a multi-phase project proposed by the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. I kind of use Cedar City anonymously there, but what they're, right now, what we're dealing with is a right-way application with the VLM for pipeline, a solar array, well field, et cetera, in Pine Valley. That is the first phase of, of the project. They are not shy about talking about going to Wawa Valley next, which is right to the east of Pine Valley, southeast of, of Snake Valley. I'm on the slide that says multi-phase project, just to be clear right now. And, and so they are going through that process with the VLM. We, it is an EIS. White Pine submitted scoping comments, and now we're waiting for a draft EIS to come, which we expect will be sometime in the, in the late winter, early spring. And so, you know, one thing that's a little bit different about this project as opposed to the SNWA fight is that Central Iron County does have the water rights right now, and they reached in through a settlement agreement, which was a horrible deal that Beaver County signed into, and they say as much. There's a lot of background about that. We think there are some avenues potentially available to us to, to change that, and, and we're exploring those. Beaver County has hired Ceni and Herskowitz, longtime counsel for White Pine County in the SNWA fight, and so we're working very closely with him still. He's very much involved in this project right now. And not to get, not to get distracted, but, so what Iron County has right now is 15,000 acre feet of rights in Pine, 11,000 in Wawa, with the 10,000 acre feet worth of applications still out there for, for Hamlin Valley. And I think the scary thing about this is that the USGS has, has said in a report that came out as, as recently as 2019, you know, between both valleys, the combined perennial yield is 14,000 acre feet. So inherently, if they put the 15,000 from Pine and the 11,000 from Wawa to beneficial use, I mean, it's a massive ground water mining project. And, you know, that's, I think what I'm going to get into here is that, that does not bode well for, for Snake Valley and valleys northward, all the way to, to Salt Lake. So to put into perspective, you'll see this map here. From left to right, we have Hamlin, Pine, and then, and then Wawa. But that's, that's kind of their vision, I guess. The next page I'm on, this project is a giant experiment with your water supply, and, you know, and this is what I was telling the folks in Utah, is what type of risk are you willing to take? You know, especially for them, there are the three underground flow systems that will, that ultimately flow all the way to the great Salt Lake. You know, they supplement each other. There's a lot of what we call transmissivity, water flowing from one basin to the next in between. They're, they're all connected, and we learned all this because of the SNWA. This is, these, these facts are, are nothing new. And it's one of the reasons why, you know, why Utah got involved so heavily in, in the Snake Valley fight, is because the interconnected nature of all the water there. And, you know, I think, you know, I think... nature of all the water there. And, you know, I think, you know, in kind of a hypothetical scenario where pumping does begin, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean drawdown stops if, you know, if they would have to turn off the tap, per se. So I'm going to get into, you know, some of the details here a little bit. You know, why will Central Iron County's project harm you? Well, you know, as it relates to Utah, it's Salt Lake. But, you know, for White Pine County, it's Snake Valley, it's Spring Valley, and a couple other valleys to the south. And I have a map of the next page here that you look. The one that says this map is your future. This is from a 2017 USGS report. And in this report, what the USGS did was they simulated pumping at 15,000 acre feet in Pine, 6,500 acre feet in Wawa Valley. And that also included on the Utah side, that they were going to stop pumping a certain amount of acre feet in Perilous Valley. But the numbers there, 255 and 256 are Pine and Wawa. 254 is Snake. 184 is Spring. Yes, 184 is Spring. 201 is what they call Spring Valley South. And there are, there are a couple other ones that, on the Nevada side, that will be affected there. You can see the yellow. But, you know, 254, for example, you're seeing up to 500 feet of drawdown in Snake Valley. And in Pine and Wawa, you're seeing up to 2,000 feet of drawdown. And so, you know, one thing I do want to make clear is that on that map below in the right-hand corner, you'll see, this is their estimate over 5,000 years. Now, we are concerned about that figure because of the way that it was used in the model. We feel that that figure is not providing the type of certainty that we actually really want or need. And it gets into some hydrologic, you know, technical language here, but they didn't calibrate for what is called storetivity. And storetivity is a fancy term for a cone of depression, and how quickly a cone of depression would incite something like 500 feet of drawdown. And so they're giving this 5,000-year figure, but it could be 500 years, it could be 50 years, it could be 100 years. We just don't know because it wasn't calibrated using data from this basin. And that's what's really scary. It's just the uncertainty that comes along with this. But if you go to the next page, and you see the map on the left, after 62 years, where they weren't even calibrating the data from these basins, they're still showing 50 feet of drawdown in Snake Valley. And so even in something like, in that timeframe, that is, it is a very real timeframe for all of us right here, you know, in this county. 62 years isn't that, isn't that far down the road. I think that's what's very concerning. So, you know, I use these maps. These are US, this is USGS data. You know, it's not perfect. We think that some of it is incomplete, but it does, it begins to paint a picture. And I think, you know, I put this next table where it says transmissivity is undeniable, yet uncertain. You're seeing the, they're using data from the Barkus study, which is some of the many in White Pine County familiar. It's kind of the Great Basin Carbonate Aquifer Study. That kind of looked at things regionally. It came up a lot during the SNWA case. And the one on the left is an older version. You'll see the GBC AAS V 1.0, and then there's the GBC AS 3.0. But what, what the, what the data are telling us is the amount of acre feet flowing from one basin to the next. And, you know, there's from Snake Valley to Pine Valley, for example, they're saying, you know, it could be 500. But then in the reverse, from Pine to Snake, it's 2,200. You know, again, what this is to us is that, you know, they know that there's a lot of water flowing from, in between these basins. You know, it's hard to say exactly how much is flowing from one to the next, but we know it's all there. But again, I think this, this just speaks to the uncertainty. You start taking all that water away, you know, what's going to happen in the long run? So, you know, again, just to kind of hammer home the message here, and then, you know, I want to, you know, answer any questions. You have the USGS model that wasn't calibrated for, you know, really predicting the timing of an impact that well. But you do have one that was calibrated for drawdown, saying, you know, you're going to see 500 feet of drawdown in Snake Valley, you know, 50 feet in severe desert, 50 feet in Spring Valley, which isn't on this list. And then in other basins, that all are very much connected to Snake Valley, as you saw on the previous slide. So, you know, that to me is just, you know, exemplifies the uncertainties. And, you know, there are a couple other things in that model that I wanted to highlight. You know, there was a plus or minus 35% margin of error associated with it, which is, that's a, that's pretty big. The hydrologist with whom you're working noted that the model only included 100 springs on the Utah side in that region. He's counted more than 500 so far in his work. And they were all flowing at about 300 gallons per minute, which is, you know, there are a lot of other springs out there likely flowing below that, that 300 gallon per minute figure. So I think, you know, again, this just, this just speaks to the uncertainty. Connections between groundwater and surface water weren't studied. And again, you know, the model didn't study how aquifers react once the pumping is stopped, because there's this notion that, you know, you pop some, you stop pumping, but that doesn't stop the cone of depression from continuing. So, you know, just kind of a, you know, what we're looking for here is, you know, what was our secret sauce in the SNWA fight? You know, kind of just that coalition of people coming together, putting aside whatever other differences to stop something from harming rural communities. You know, that will include kind of the modeling piece, the hydrology piece that I mentioned. And what's good about that is, once we get the hydrology out of the way, we don't need to do that again. You know, that's not like they infer an eternity where, you know, it's, well, what is it this month? What is it next month? Once you have the hydrology, you kind of have it. And I think, you know, as White Pine County has always lived by, you know, what do we want? We want a conservative approach. You know, once the water is gone, it won't come back. So, and I guess I would just leave you all with a question. You know, do you trust a project that by its very nature is groundwater mining project? So, you know, that's just the quick and dirty of it. I'm happy to answer any questions, provide anything, do anything that I can.
Motion by Adrian Kyle. Okay, thank you. All right. So, that being done, item two.
Thank you, Travis.
Item two is discussion for possible action. The approval of Resolution 2020-82 to utilize up to 20,000 from contingency to cover the cost of water attorney services related to the Pine Valley Water Supply Project. Elizabeth, why don't you give us a little pump on this?
Well, I do have that resolution written, and it's in your backup. And this is just, I would dedicate 20,000 from contingency for this. I'm not sure that we would use 100% of that in the current fiscal year. But I don't know how that, that those attorney bills close. So we would commit 20,000 for your contingency. You currently have 242,000 left available in contingency. So this would take it down to 222,000 for the balance of this fiscal year.
Motion approved.
Motion by Travis, second. Second by, second by James. Any further question? All over favor. Aye, opposed, none, pass, no. Okay, Kyle?
Y'all are wonderful, as always. You know how to get ahold of me. And if y'all need anything, please never hesitate to reach out. And thank you all so much. I know.
And Kyle, you're working, you're working closely with Jeremy Drew.
I certainly am, yes. And I know in Beaver County in Utah, we'll be really just thrilled to hear your support. And I think this will also help to, you know, just ensure that Millard and Jewett and the others step up. And as always, you guys set the example. So, thank you so much for everything. Take care.
I don't think the question is whether or not we can afford to. I think it's the question is whether we can afford to.
Yeah. Especially if it's down the road for Great Basin National Park and all that stuff is.
Okay, page three, item F. It's attempt at Dean Road Commission Meeting. Item one is discussion for possible action. Okay. Discussion for possible action to approval to reinstate the road agreement and grant an extension and to make any amendments necessary to the agreement considering Western Oil's deposit of an additional $100,000 to the county road bond account after the previous meeting. Commissioner Vice Chairman Travis Codon, District Attorney Mike Levo, Finance Director Elizabeth Francis, and Public Works Director Bill Collerwood.
If you don't mind, I want to do a quick update of where we're at. Travis, at this point?
Perfect.
So we are working on repair damage to WP5, the cutoff road, WP1204. That material was already there and in place. We continue to work that. It's a little difficult because we have a map received already to use the water from the Hamilton Mine or the Elko Mining Group. But that has been, that application has been applied to the state. With, what was I trying to thought? Excuse me. We are working on 1177. And we are working from that intersection of 1204, which is the farthest south. And we are working our way north towards the oil path where the drilling was take place. We are tracking all of those costs, and that's the total for labor, equipment, and those kind of things. When we have six operators on the project, based on the type of equipment they have, it costs between 20 and 24,000 a week to have that there. We are probably, we are doing a cap, not a cap over the road. We are doing, probably that's not the road I'm looking for. We are establishing a base for on 1177, and that we can, once we get some water, we'll be able to bring some of that bug dust back in and bring it up in layers. But that base that we're establishing, so we're probably two-thirds of the way from 1204, heading north to the path. So that's kind of the progress of where we're at. And I believe we spent in the neighborhood of 21,000 or something like that at the conclusion of last week. And then for this agenda item, I would say that we have more of a satisfactory arrangement with Western Oil. And what my thought is, or what that is, is their commitment to drill a water well off of Highway 50 on 1177 and pay for that. And then their commitment also to pay for the application fee, which is done and submitted to the state by UJ Basin Engineering. So we're waiting for confirmation numbers so we can see how that application is progressing through the, through the state engineering office. You got anything?
Yeah, yeah, just following up with that. Western Oil reached out to me after we terminated their agreement, and they sent over another 100,000. James is on Zoom, so I'll let him speak next. But my thought was is, you know, give them an extension till our second meeting in January, and then determine where we are at that, and then make a, with water, and if we do get any weather that would help with that, and then determine, you know, if more funds will be needed, or, you know, where we want to go, or if we can restart bond, or keep the same, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll let Mr. Franklin.
James, you on there?
Yes, sir, I am. And good morning to everybody. And thank you very much. Appreciate that at times. We are very focused on trying to proceed with the project. And I just so appreciate the helpful assistance with us and working with us. We certainly want to bring the justice to the county.
Any other comments on this before we take an action? Anybody?
So the motion is clear. We are not reinstating an actual written agreement. We have been drafting one. But the ordinance just requires to have a satisfactory arrangement with the road supervisor. So as long as he and Western, Bill and Western Oil are working together right now, that's sufficient for the ordinance. If we want to see a written agreement, Bill and James, you have to work that out. There was a couple drafts proposed. More importantly, is the next item for reopening that road. This is the more important action that needs to be taken. If that's the, if that is the, we'll board. And then item three, when we get to it, I'll explain more about that.
So for right now, we can go ahead and act on item one?
Yeah, I would say approval to allow Bill to enter into a satisfactory arrangement with Western Oil for the roads out there.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion that, you know, enter a satisfactory agreement with the caveat that we bring this back on the 27th of January, and at that point, see where we're at, and reinstate the deadlines at that point, depending on whether it costs and where things are tracking.
Motion by Travis and a second by Lori. Any further discussion?